I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, June 25th, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Our invocation tonight will be done by Mr. Gonzalez.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again we ask that you be with us. We thank you for your many blessings. We especially appreciate those that step up and give Freddy their time and tell us to make Florisville a better place to live in. At the same time, we ask that you guide us in carrying out that responsibility, our leaders to know the issues and make good decisions, and the rest of us to be interested and involved in the process for the betterment of our town. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
If you would, establish your form. Councilman Guerrero, Councilman Nieto, Councilman Ortiz, and Councilman Dejada. If you will, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, at this time, I would like to entertain any citizen comments?
Please, very quickly, Jill Mohan. Later on in the evening, we're going to address City Manager's evaluation and contract renewal. You always hear this from me, I would tell you. She's doing a great job of planning the zoning. We've seen her do a great job with the USDA stuff. She's been wonderful for our city. Give her a good evaluation and keep her. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we're going to go on to item 1A, consideration and action to approve meeting minutes for special council meeting held on June 18th, 2015. If I can have a motion?
Madam Mayor, on, let's see. On item N... I believe, I believe it was Chris Foster, Councilman Marky, did you make the motion for the... The, no, on the...
The budget amendment from District 14?
Yeah, from District 14. Did you make the motion?
I think I did.
Yeah, and I say I did.
Okay, I don't think that was a decision, I apologize.
Also, on item N, I think the, under the asterisks there, it says Councilman Dejada made the comment that it's improper for elected officials to be part of the hiring process for any potential city employee. Could you please add on, that was in reference to the comment that the mayor was going to be involved in this selection process?
I'll make the motion for meeting minutes. Has changed, or hasn't been, or hasn't been.
Okay, motion by Councilman Dejada, don't have a second but changes.
Second?
Second by Councilman Dejada, Councilman Ortiz, are you ready?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Stand.
Motion carries, please. Okay, now we're going to go on to item 2A, our financials for May 2015. Revenue expense, fund balances, sales tax reports, planning.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman. As every month, I present the financials to you. The top spreadsheet gives you a summary of our expenditures and revenues, and also our ending balance, and our fund balance, and also it gives you an overview of the sales tax. The major funds that we, and I usually like to speak about, is General Fund 301, which up to date, we have collected $2,758,237. We have expense, $2,193,482. Revenues against expenditures gives us a balance of $364,755. Adding that to our fund balance of $252,000 gives us an honest fund balance of $617,403. I am very happy to see this balance right here, and I'm working very hard to keep it that way. This will give us, put us a half a million dollar dollar on our reserve fund balance, so it will get us closer to our goal of 90 days reserve. Our utility fund 221, our revenue collected is $1,488,230. Our year-to-date expenditures is $1,454,65. Revenues against expenditures gives us a balance of $34,165. You add, you add that to our beginning fund balance of $4,219,111, giving us an unaudited fund balance of $42,253,176. As you can see, our two major funds are on track. We're doing well. General, the sewer or the utility fund is not overspending, is spending what it's collecting. What, I did an analysis of the revenues for, for budget, and we noticed that the water revenues have been low for, for this time of year, and the reason for that is attributed to the rains. You know, there's too much rain, so there's not enough watering. So the, the water revenues are very low. But I'm happy to report that we are not spending any more than what we're collecting. Okay. Our sales tax collected for the month of May total is $291,793. The city allocation of the sales tax, it's $145,897, which gives us an increase of $2,970 compared to the May, the, the month of May of 2014. Behind this spreadsheet is our reports generated by ENCODE. And then after that, you also have, and I now kind of make it a habit of providing you with all the sales tax spreadsheets, so that way you're up to date on, with the allocation that it was approved by council, how much each entity is getting, how much the city is getting, how mu- how much of the sales tax collected per month is going to the street tax, to 4A corporations, and 4B. So if you have reviewed all of these and you have any questions? Yes, ma'am. Every budget amendment that has been passed, it's been voted. Any more questions?
I've got a couple of questions, I have some that I was sure, exactly what you meant. On page 1, on the sewer, commercial sales, what is that?
That's a sewer for commercial properties.
What?
Commercial properties.
Commercial properties, okay.
Yes. The water is separated by commercial and residential, and so is the sewer. It's separated by residential and commercial.
And, and how you derive the sewer penalty? Why, why do you know that?
That is generated by the system, ENCODE. So every time that a bill is not paid, there is a penalty assessed to the water and sewer, and that's how it gets allocated.
Okay, on page 2, under the contractual, what is the ETS credit card fees? And then the professional audit fees?
The ETS credit card fee, that is a company that we use to do credit card collections. When a customer comes to the front desk, or they do it through the internet, and they make a payment with a credit card, it go, that this company handles those payments. So these fees is what they are charging us to do those services. On the professional audit services is when the auditors come and do the audit, they do the audit to every single section of the city's components. So there's an allocation for the, whatever is, is allocated to utilities, and to General Fund, and to 4B corporation, and 4A corporation. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. Thank you and good evening.
Okay, now we're going to go to item 2B, our IT presentations, starting with documentation, with DocuMation. Madam Mayor, if I may, for the record, Henryetta is not going to be presenting tonight, just DocuMation tonight, and I have the information here. I represent different DocuMations here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilman. My name is Chris Smiley. I am the Account Manager with DocuMation. I have with me Preston Wolfhook. He's actually our Director of IT Services with DocuMation. And I just want to tell you a little bit about DocuMation, and then I'm going to turn it over to Preston to actually go over the report that he just gave you, or that Henrietta just gave you, and answer any questions y'all may have. So, DocuMation is a privately-held company headquartered in San Antonio. It was begun in 1997 as an, originally a copier company. And over the years, we've become a full-service IT company handling everything that's within an office environment to help organizations like the City of Florisville become more efficient and just get better service. We've actually done several assessments for the city, including one of all your printing devices, and then one that Preston's going to go over with you. You have in your hands, just make recommendations on IT services. It's been able to give us the ability to make the best recommendations we could and create a long-term relationship with the City of Florisville. In doing that, what we've been able to do is really make it so that we could look at things holistically, not just sell you particular pieces of devices, but actually perform the highest level of service. And it's actually been interesting over the last several months when we started working with y'all. I think that I've been here to see Henrietta and Connie more than service providers in the past have in years, and I've probably been out here more in the last two months. As a territory manager and account manager, I really pride myself on being here to take care of y'all and your needs, and I think through what you're going to hear from Preston in just a moment, you'll see some of the other things we'll be able to help y'all do down the road if you take the recommendation. So, rather be getting a lot more in-depth about that. I'm going to hand this over to Preston, and we'll go over it.
Good evening. My name is Preston. I'm Director of IT for DocuMation in San Antonio. What you see in front of you is a brief snapshot of a detailed report that we provided to Connie and Henrietta about three months ago is when we began the assessment, has been provided this information. The assessment is a cost-free assessment, so there's no charge for it. It's something that we come along and help to bring value to your organization that really covers these high-level aspects of what are the goals and objectives of the City of Florisville? What do we find when we manage your IT environment? What do we recommend? What does a program look like? And, and most importantly, how do we implement good service and support for the City of Florisville? I won't go through all the details tonight unless you're interested in some very specific details here. With IT, it could be anywhere from a 10-minute to a three-hour conversation, depending on what you're talking about, and so if you have specific questions about that. But from a high-level perspective, our goal and objective of this assessment was to look at your IT environment for the city, for the police department, for the municipal court, and for the civic center. We actually visited all locations, met with most of the individuals in these locations. We looked at a range of solutions for IT as well, starting with your hardware, your software. We looked at security solutions, how secure is the network? How vulnerable it is to penetration, so hacking attempts to the network? How vulnerable is your email? How vulnerable is your backup system as well? We looked at your email, how's that working? How's that corresponding for the city and for the other three departments? And as well is how do you support all this? That's the most important part. Around 36, I believe it's 36 workstations, about as many users across these multiple locations. How do you provide a cohesive look to this environment? So that's really what you see through the goals and objectives. You see what we found broken down between all four locations. You see our recommendations. Our main goal here is how do we increase productivity and efficiency of these different divisions? How do we control your operating costs? There's a fixed operating cost for running IT. It ranges around 18 to about 23 different financial categories in which you're spending, monthly, annually, every few months, you know? You have capital purchases, you have monthly purchases. How do we control those so you know, how do I get these in the budget? It's the exact same, it's never going to change, and we have no hidden, oh wow, something blew up, we have to spend $8,000 to get this fixed. And then lastly, we look at reducing your risk. If you are going to invest this money, how do we reduce the risk to your IT department to make sure that you get the longest life out of it? As well as how do you maintain it and protect any sort of exposure to the outside world? So you'll see that throughout these presentation, throughout that document that you have there. That's the high-level approach, where we really look through all those different areas. Specifically on the security side, you know, being a city, there's a lot more fine pertinent information here than you see with a lot of businesses that cannot be, have any sort of vulnerability to it, especially when you're dealing with innocent court. So how do you keep that under blocking key? Make sure only certain people have permissions to it? And we follow a broad line of SEC, FINRA, HIPAA, I mean, all across the board, down for breaking relations with all of our customers to make sure that IT does provide that level of security. Do you have any questions based on that? I can provide answers to very detailed information, or if you're looking more for just a methodology approach of how do we provide IT service and support, I can go through that as well.
Who's our current key person? Is it, is it Harry?
Currently, we're using Anna. That just happened recently. It's been kind of like a come and go, and things such as that. And so what we're hoping to do is we're getting ready to look at technology, and expand some things, and most courts, to expand some things. We need someone here roughly to do that. So this is an option we can use versus a full-time, salaried person. Being here is an option that we can exercise if we get to it. The mayor, and I had a conversation very briefly today about the internet. It's down, it's up. I literally have to point at the police department in order for us to have internet access. And when it's down, I don't have telephone access. And so this is happening, not a very blue moon. It happens a lot. My staff has been suffering. So we're hoping that we can get a handle on it. One of the things they did absolutely free, because I didn't know what I had. I don't know how many JPEGs, whatever I have, I didn't know. So he literally went to each and every location, counted how many printers we had, how many, what we have, what time is it. One of the things our secretaries have problems is when those XP is not, they're diversion. I don't speak geek, but they do. And so what we need to have is kind of like our house geek. Not a lot of people can do this, especially for our size, because we're so small. I thought, he came back and said we had 36 units. I'm like, ooh, that's a whole lot. He's like, no, not really. And upgrade what we do for the computers. Technology is the way we're going to survive, and so this is very, very important. So we wanted to say, these are some of the things. He's analyzing things. We have some serious decisions to make in reference to our server, our routers, and wiring, and things such as that. And so he's done an analysis, so I know what I have. He's made some recommendations, so I know what we need to do. And so we wanted to see, when I talk about DocuMation and our budgetary process that's coming up in August, you can see this is what we're talking to them. He'll come back another time, but we wanted to do the introduction now. Food for thought, as you know, this is not only for any action, but we need you to think about, we need someone who helps us make the transition. So that mayor and council, it won't be as painful for our new transition, for our new router, as it was for our telephone system. That was a learning curve for me, and we need to have a tech, a geek, that can talk that to us, so that we can have that transition as we are interfacing and brain is not fussing with ENCODE, that that person will be here. And literally, they come to the city hall. They will do onsite to make sure that it interfaces right between the cops and you, because if it doesn't interface right, nothing works at all.
One question, food for thought. Do we own our PCs, or is that a, is that an usual programmer? What do we have?
We own all of our PCs, and they are very dated. So we're hoping that we can look at a program, and not only are they the same, not all have that safety har- I get this thing comes on this computer all the time, it's XL. Some of them have protection, some of them don't. At some point in time, our, it was like, if we have the firewall, the firewall doesn't work correctly, and so then they have to take it down, because I'm like, any emails, and then I'm getting stuff that, oh goodness.
Whether it's cost-effective to lease the, the computers rather than to purchase our own?
Definitely something that a geek can do for us, and he likes it.
I'm good.
That they can make recommendations, so all our computers are the same, that we have some, you know, some kind of continuity over this, and actually have a program or a budget, so every year we can kind of replace these things, like I've been recommending for the police department, to every year replace certain things so that we can actually have a comprehensive approach to this. Some of our wiring is not necessarily where it should be to be able to do that. So that's what we're hoping to do with this, to take an approach, to have someone come in and make a, and then monitor us going forward. So as things are expiring, as we need to renew different things, they do that.
One of the main things that we built our program around is the concept of a virtual CIO. That term really refers to small, medium-sized businesses, somewhere between around 15 to 75 or 100 employees. You usually don't have the capital means or necessarily your budget to hire a CIO, you know? You have your CEO, you have people driving revenue, you have people, you know, driving operating costs, you have people driving finances, but technology usually gets left behind. So we championed that concept of letting us be your virtual CIO. Our role is to plan out three years always in advance with you. We do that through an onboard account review cycle every three months with our clients, where we actually come in, sit down, sit with the management team and say, where are we going the next three months, the next six months, the next year, the next three years? So we can make sure that we're purchasing effectively. We don't, you know, drive ourselves into a corner, have a bunch of costs that aren't necessary, and we want to make sure that we're always planning ahead. So that's one of the big concepts that we look at when we make those recommendations. We look at things like, do you rent the equipment? Do you lease the equipment? Do you buy all right? What is the lifecycle of this equipment? Computers, servers, workstations, routers, switches, all these different things have a very different lifecycle. And I'm okay with being called a geek. We've got a lot more geeky guys in our office, so I'm the, I'm the consultant, but the geeky guys really take care of a lot of stuff, so.
Preston, can you briefly touch on page 5 of the services and support on me?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so our services and support, what we provide is a managed help desk as well as onsite support. We're staffed from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but it never goes to voicemail. You know, when you call DocuMation to get IT support, somebody picks up the phone right then and there. It's a systems engineer, it's not voicemail, and it's not dispatch. So if you're having an issue, let's say your Henrietta just got your computer, can't find his file, I accidentally deleted it three weeks ago and I need to retrieve it. You can call the help desk, get somebody right there on the phone, your remote in, fix the issue, jump back out. I mean, it's a very immediate response time and a very quick resolution time. If we need to get onsite, we close 90% of our calls at the help desk, so nine out of 10 calls, we escalate to onsite, and that's when our guys are coming onsite. Within an emergency crisis, we can get any customer within 30 minutes because of how we set up this model to give you that immediate support. So our onsite team moves around very fluidly. So from 7 to 7, Monday through Friday, you're always going to get somebody to pick up that phone. But we do provide after-hours support in case you need it. It just goes to voicemail, and we pick, call you back in about 15 minutes. So if it's nighttime on weekends. But we're able to provide this for the city, the municipal court, the police department, and the civic center, so we, all four entities. And one last thing on there as well, we did find some cost savings. You know, when looking through things, we found some redundancy within some day works, some things where you could basically take a server here, server there, combine them together. Find a way in which you can share city resources so you can further that dollar instead of reinvesting in each one of these different departments. So there's ways to share, if that makes sense. There are some ways that you really don't want to share, because it definitely causes issues and it affects the other departments. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
A good question.
Well, ma'am, on the one thing the manager addressed in your introduction, which was the interconnection between IT that's in the sky and telephones, it seems to me that's been the most difficult and the most disabling event to occur. How can that be cured the quickest? Because when we're down a day, and we're depending on the internet or telephone, and there's no telephone, and there's no landline that we know, that's a complete shutdown.
Correct. The, the interconnection between IT and telephony is one in which those have now converged over the past few years. So you used to see these as separate, and now as everything's moved towards the network. You have copier companies, IT companies, phone companies, all integrating on the network, but still they're very different industries that know different types of technology. So it's still very important to have a telephone provider, but most importantly is how does that integrate with your IT network? A lot of that looks towards, like using LV Wi-Fi right now, is what you guys are using with the police department. It beams a signal over here to this office, it grabs that signal and it converts it here locally. So there's ways in which, you know, if we were your consultant, we would sit down with the phone company as well, who your phone support is. Sit down, talk with them, and say, how are we, how are we able to make one cohesive network, but at the same time provide reliable service and support on both sides? So you know when you have phone issues, everybody's not pointing their fingers at a different company trying to figure out who's going to resolve this. People point at the internet, they put out the phone lines, they point at the IT company, the phone company. I mean, it just goes in circles, and what happens is you get caught in the middle, and you're trying to figure out what, what we do here. So there's definitely some recommendations there. There's some short endings, quick things you can do. And there's some long-term fixes as well that make more sense for the long run. I hope that answered your question.
No, I'm just looking for, what do we need to do immediately?
I'd say one of those is definitely to make sure that there's a, what we call separate mean land that's set up with those phones. It's basically still taking the IT signal, but it's putting it on a separate network, so that way it doesn't get messed up with the phone system. And one recommendation I would make in the long run is really, this is a hub right here. I would really not recommend having LV Wi-Fi at the police department beaming that signal. Heavy rain shuts down that signal. What, what you're doing is you're beaming light, basically, or like an FM wave over from the police department over here. So heavy rain, anything, I mean, the past few weeks, if that starts hitting, that can actually disrupt that light beam, and what it does is it shuts down internet here and not the municipal court, because they're on a separate mean land. But I would consider just looking at bringing your own internet lines, your own phone lines directly to this building, so that way you're not having to have this reliance on another building across the street. Because at that point in time, police department goes down, it brings down the city. You know, you should have separate redundancy, so somebody's calling in trying to get services, you don't have both departments down at the same time. Right, that is this way you have redundancy between the two. You're welcome.
Chris, I have a question. Today we had a major problem. Payroll almost didn't get put out. If we call you and tell you we're having this problem, how do you respond to that?
Was this with ENCODE or?
With the internet, and yeah, basically internet, ENCODE, everything was down.
Everything was down. One of our main tenants that we do as well is line of business application assistance. So for example, let's say Connie has a problem with ENCODE. The database is messed up, probably just a common thing, right? Try to get into ENCODE, nobody can jump in. What we actually do is rely on your call DocuMation. We call ENCODE on your behalf, and we call Geek Speak. We talk to them, because they're going to get on the phone with Connie and say, Connie, what's going on with the SQL server? And she's going to say, SQL what? I don't even know what that is, you know? So what we do is we actually are the middleman between you and those providers. So in this case, in time, if it was an issue with internet with LV Wi-Fi, DocuMation's going to call on your behalf. You call us, or better yet, our monitoring system sees that you- You call us, or better yet, our monitoring system sees that you've lost all internet access. We see that a lot. Internet goes down at two AM, more guys are in the office early. We actually have a team that arrives at five AM, our dedicated maintenance team. They see that you're actually down, they're already dispatching alerts and alerts out to LV Wi-Fi, calling them on your behalf, saying, hey, there's issues here, we need to ask for a call onsite. By the time you get to the office, a lot of times, we have guys waiting outside your front door saying, hey, by the way, did you know your internet's down? You're unlocking the door, letting us in, so we can start working on your issue before anybody comes into the office. So in that case, that's.
You don't necessarily send somebody to the site.
Oh, we will, yeah. So in your case, if the internet was down, we first identify as a power failure, an internet failure, a server failure, a program failure. And if we need to be onsite or dispatch out here directly, we'll be onsite and accomplish all the issues with you. So that way, they don't have to spend their time trying to figure out what's going on.
Because a lot of times, some companies will try to tell the employee, okay, try this and try this. You don't want that.
Yeah, we don't do that. It gets really frustrating for a CEO or president, because they usually just turn around and say, well, that's my pay you to do. So we just kind of.
Be half or whatever, I have no idea.
In long range, in long range, what we want to be able to do is that hopefully we can come up with and make some decisions on doing something, so everybody can have the same email, you have the email address, that you can have some things electronically and have downloaded to a notepad, and those kind of things that we're hoping to do, so I won't keep killing trees and making all these copies if we don't have to, but we can get there once we actually have the infrastructure for our IT set. Because right now, that's stage four, and I'm still in stage one.
Thank you.
And can we say happy birthday to our documentation representative?
Happy birthday.
He came out on his birthday and brought us cupcakes.
Yes, my wife is like, well, if you're going to go be with some other people, you can celebrate with them, so please. I brought cupcakes. It's kind of like when you were in elementary school, please y'all enjoy them, so.
Thanks, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, now we're going to go to item two C, Mutcode Ordinance Codifications.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we have a presenter that's going to talk about Mutcode, that will be helping us spin off of the technology presentation we just had, getting on the map, getting our ordinances codified, getting them online and on our website. And I'm going to introduce Crystal Hayes with Mutcode to do a presentation.
Hi, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Very, very happy to be here. I want to start with giving you guys a little background on municipal code. We are the largest codification company in the United States. We are one of the oldest as well. We started in nineteen fifty-one. It was a one-man operation. George Langford had an idea that he needed to help cities codify city ordinances, literally got in his car and drove city to city, state to state, covered the entire United States. Today, I'm proud to say that we are thirty-seven hundred customers and growing. Here in the state of Texas, we have over three hundred alone. So it's one of the biggest areas, and of course, it's one of literally the biggest areas, so it's a lot of windshield time for us. With the codification service, let me back that up and explain a little bit about what that is. Codification is that we will take the ordinances that you guys pass and approve. The city staff sends them to us, we organize them, we compile them into a legal binder, for lack of a better term. It'll be tabbed and indexed, easily searchable. So let's say somebody comes in or questions a roofing permit ordinance, and city staff has to, what, spend three days looking for something? That's just a waste of time. By having your city ordinances codified, they can literally go to the book and/or online, we'll talk about that here in a second, and they can tag to that section, and they can read the requirements right there. It is by far one of the best things that I think a city can do. As a former code enforcement officer with the city of Carrollton for ten years, I wrote ordinances, I drafted them, I researched them, I would have given my right arm for a lot of the tools that we have. But by far, when you talk about enforcement of city ordinances, your police officers, your code enforcement, building inspectors, food inspectors, everybody relies on this one piece of documentation. And if it's outdated or if it's non-existent, then they end up having to ask city staff, and it's usually in a couple of files, you know, file cabinets, and then everybody's trying to find that one piece that they need. So that's a little bit about codification, in layman's terms, if you will. As far as what we do here in the state of Texas, I am your account representative. Like I said, I was with the city of Carrollton for ten years, so I have a little bit of municipality experience behind me. As far as supporting within the city of, within the state of Texas, we are members of the TML, the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, Texas City Managers Association, Texas City Attorney Associations, pretty much anything that revolves around cities and legalities, we are a member, very active members in. And we support in every way, shape, or form. When it comes to what we do as far as the city of Florisville's codes, if we were to get your ordinances, you would actually be assigned a legal editorial team, not just a code editor and not a proofreader. You will actually have a state-certified, state of Texas certified attorney assigned to your account, and every piece of legislation that comes in, they are apprised of and they review. So it's, you get that additional whenever you're talking about supplementation and codification. And that's a huge piece, because as any attorney will tell you, it's just a second set of eyes. It's somebody else to catch those things that they might not have caught. Perhaps there's a new state law that supersedes something that somebody's trying to pass or something along those lines, and we can catch that for you. As far as the codification process goes, we would take your current city ordinances as they exist. We will take them and organize them and categorize them and put them into a usable format, and then we will provide a legal review for that. Our city attorney will literally, page by page, word by word, go through your code of ordinances. And they will identify any internal conflicts, meaning, let's say you have a sign, an ordinance over here that talks about a sign, and an ordinance over here that talks about a sign, and they conflict each other, or the language isn't the same, or maybe, you know, this says ten foot and this says eight foot. They will identify all of those issues, and they will issue a legal memo on that. At that time, city staff and the city attorney and/or yourselves will be reviewing that and deciding what y'all want to do as far as making those changes to bring your code up to current stats. And then, once we get the legal memo done, then we'll issue a draft, and then we ask city staff and the attorney to also review that, ready and get, mark it up, put smile faces on it, whatever you feel like doing, and then send that back to us, and then we'll issue that final draft with an ordinance that they will bring back to you guys that basically says, this, from this point forward, this is our town's legislation, this is what we're going to base everything we do on. And basically, anything that's a permanent law or anything that carries a penalty is what we would include in that. Okay? The next step, once we get you codified, when we get you brought today, there's the supplementation services. That's ongoing. So after we get your book all nice and legal for you, every time y'all adopt an ordinance, you're going to send that ordinance to us, and we are going to supplement it into your code. So we are going to keep up to date your code. So it won't be a one-time thing, and then ten years from now, we're back in the same mess. We're just going to continue that supplemental service, that's what we call it. And thirdly, the other service that we provide is online services. And I know this is a big stickler, as Ms. Turner just pointed out. Technology is where you're going to be. Technology is where everybody's headed, and having your code of ordinances online that's searchable, everybody can use it, everybody can see it real time, including police officers, including code enforcement. Because there's a lot of times that, I'm sure that the police officer would agree, there's things that happen at midnight, and there's nobody around to ask, where's this ordinance at? What does it say? They can pull it up on their tablets, they can pull it up on their smartphones, it's real time. So, and every time they send us a new ordinance, we can update it online. So it's just one of those services that, if we're going to move into that new technology world, then that's what we need to be. So I also was asked to kind of give you a background on what types of Texas cities that we support as well. We have over three hundred. Everything from the population of two hundred residents to two million residents. So we run that gamut. But in this area alone, I just kind of threw together a little quick list of some cities that we service. San Antonio, Seguin, New Braunfels, San Marcos, Corpus Christi, Alice, La Union, Lockhart, Kyle, Elgin, Austin, Round Rock, Georgetown. Again, I could go on and on, but we have three hundred something cities, so. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
I have questions.
Sure.
When y'all are going through everything, do y'all pull out some of the ordinances that you think really shouldn't be in the book?
We will not pull them out. That will happen during the legal review process, and basically, at that time, we are going to cross-reference that with state law. And in that process, if there's a state law that has repealed that ordinance or supersedes that ordinance, or maybe we have one on the books that says you can't walk a pig and a rabbit at the same time on a leash. There's weird ones out there, we all know. Those are the things that the attorney will identify in that legal memo and say, you might consider amending this ordinance or repealing it altogether. And then that will go back to the city management, and then they can make that determination as to what we want to do as a city. Correct.
So you go as far, as far back as our, say, our first ordinance we had?
We will go back as far as we can. There are some occasions where we can't go back as far, because they don't have that documentation, but we will take everything that you guys send us into consideration. And we've already received a lot of information from the city. So from that point forward, that ordinance that I said at the very end will give you a final copy with an ordinance that sets this as the legal law, which basically said, if it's not included in this code of ordinance book at this point in time, then it doesn't exist. Because there are pieces of legislation that sometimes gets lost from eighteen, eighteen or nineteen hundred. So if we can't find them, then we just omit them, and then we move forward, and then that way, if you need to insert something later, you can.
When you say book, are you talking about actually printed?
It is, well, we can do printed, and that's where our company was founded on, publishing a, and it's a three-room binder, it's a post binder. And the reason why we do it in a binder is because every time we do a supplement, which is, depends on the schedule that the city sets up with us, we will send you supplement pages, and you'll literally take that page and insert it and take out the old page, because there will be some change on that page.
Does your company provide something where you can have a search word, for instance, like you're saying, whatever, I want to have a horse on my property. Would there be a search word you could put online for that ordinance to come up with all those that are related to that subject?
Yes. And I didn't talk about our online services as much as I probably could, because again, when you get into technology, it could be a two-minute conversation, it could be a three hours. But as far as our online services, we are the most advanced services for a codification company that's out there right now. Our advanced search terms are phenomenal. So you can put in, for the techie people, they can change the search, whether you want a fuzzy search, synonym search, Boolean search, however you're used to searching, you can change that search element up, and you can put in a string of words and say, I want to find all of these, such as junked vehicle, residential yard, whatever it is, and it will pinpoint those ordinances that has any of that language in it for you. And it's really nice and neat, because it'll highlight it for you. So as you're scrolling down, you can see where's this junk vehicle, residential.
Okay, so if I walked into city hall over to the front desk, I say, I want to have, you know, this at my house, the girls up front can search that?
They don't even have to walk into the city hall, they can do it from their house if it's on the internet.
Right, but if the customer just comes in.
Absolutely.
Would they have to call you, or is that something?
No, no, no. It's all online, and it's very accessible to everybody, that's what I'm saying. When you start talking about an online code, it's available smartphones. Like, I can pull up any of our cities right now, and we can go in and we can search anything on it. So if you're drafting an ordinance and you want to know about tow-in vehicles or what another city does, you can just pull it right up.
And your house, is that a one-time fee, is that a recurring fee?
When you get into the money aspect of it, the codification process is the fee, and we can break that down into four payments, so that we can divide that over a couple of fiscal years for you. Then your supplemental process, we can only estimate that, because that really comes down to how many ordinances you guys pass per year that actually change the code. But we have a pretty good idea based on other cities and trends on your size, and we provided that to the city. And then additionally is the annual online fee. And there's a base rate that you can choose, all the way up to every bells and whistles that we have. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to item two D, twenty-fifteen personnel policies, employee Okay, Mayor, I'm going to have our HR director to talk about the handbook. I just want to let you know that some of the things are required, we had to add in here, it was topical to do, but some of these are required because of our USDA requirements, but I'll let Margaret speak to that. Margaret?
Good afternoon. This evening, we're presenting the employee handbook to you. What we've done is, pretty much has just cleaned it up. There was some repetitious information in there, and there are some new items that have been added as well. Right quickly, some of the items that have been updated or added, we've added the employment standards, standards and practices, which is the equal opportunity, the Americans with Disability Act, reporting discrimination to human resource, and immigration law compliance. Those have been added to the employee handbook, and they're towards the end of the handbook. Some of the other revisions that have been added and will affect some of the employees is the sick leave policy. In our old handbook, we had where the employee could roll over all of their sick leave hours yearly. We are now going to set the maximum accrual for sick leave to four hundred and eighty hours, which is six months' time. Once the maximum is reached, an employee will not accumulate any more sick leave until once they start using the sick leave, then they'll start accumulating the hours once again. But they cannot go over the four hundred and eighty hours. That, I'm sorry, that's on page twenty-one. We also have the vacation leave, which was also set, that's in section eight on page twenty-eight, which was also worth as to where the employee could roll over all of the unused approved hours from year to year. We are now tapping that as the employee may carry over eighty hours, which is two weeks' time over to the next year. So the employees will, need to use their vacation times they approve it throughout the year.
That's, what was the policy before on the two week? I thought we had changed that before.
Before, it was all of your unused time could be rolled over into the next year. So if you had three weeks, four weeks of time, you could roll it all over into the next year. I believe the last time that was changed was two thousand and six? I remember.
It's been.
The vacation? I believe it was two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, six months.
Margaret, I have a question for Henry. Won't this roll over, put the city in debt?
Well, how we do it right now is a problem, that we have to show this on the books, as well the sick time and the vacation time. Because even though, according to our employee handbook, that has always been here, if you off sick for some kind of long-term time, six months, then your job is done. But would you allow somebody to have three hundred, five hundred, six hundred vacation days? No one can ever use that many days. But because it's on the books, the city has to set it aside as its accountant, so we need to be able to reduce that. Six months is about as much, it's very, very nice to be able to do that, to allow your employees to have six months of vacation, of sick time, sick leave on the books. But we have some that have more than six months.
Well, I thought we had cleaned that up, like back in two thousand and ten, when we had a lot of people with hundreds of hours that were kind of retiring, we had these payouts that had to be given.
They had a practice of allowing you to retire, but use up your sick time, but TML says you cannot do that. The day you retire is the day you retire. And so technically, the day you retire, you can't use up your sick days. Then you can't be sick for six months and then say, okay, now I'm retiring, so your effective date becomes that. But that's the practice that was in the handbook, so we clean up that kind of language. Now, this is our first big draft, and Lou, I want to thank your office for working so hard with us to get it done, but there's still some other things that we're finding out that we need to go through, but we want you all to take an opportunity to look at it, read it, digest it. at it, read it, digest it. It's a very important thing for personnel handbook, as we're coming up with the next thing on the agenda. These are some things that we need to put policies in place, it'll be online, we'll make sure that we go through it with the employees, but these are kind of common practices that most companies are not allowing to carry more than two weeks or three weeks of time on the books. It is expensive the way you're doing it now. So we're hoping that it's going to clean up some of that language, and it's kind of like a rule of thumb practice for HR, those kind of things.
Doesn't the four hundred and eighty hours seem excessive to carry over?
Or a sick time?
Yeah, sick time, that's way too much sick time.
Well, I have some employees that have more than that on the books right now, so I have to cap it off someplace.
I believe in use it or lose it?
If that's the policy that you like to take, councilman, I have no problem doing that, I just need it to make the transition a little easier, because as I said, I do have, we do have staff members that have it excessive of that. But if you have a major injury and you have earned this time, I have somebody who hasn't taken a sick day in twenty years, it would be wrong to just wipe it out and say, okay, I'm not going to let you be covered for the six months. It's kind of like the maximum you can cover, and then we're going to encourage people to use their time so they won't build up that bank, but if they've already earned that time, and it's always been there and that's their hope, that they don't call it sick because they want to use that day, that's one thing. It does have a value on the books, but it has a value to staff as well.
I'm against it.
And I'm just saying, I'm just saying, but going, I understand there's people who've accumulated, it's been done, but I'm saying going forward, I think four hundred and eighty hours is way too much. Even the two weeks, I mean, if you have two weeks vacation, you don't use it, then you lose it, and that's how it is at my employment, I mean.
Mine too.
Yeah. I mean, you know.
I don't know. As I said, this is a, this is a draft, a working draft, please mark it up, make notes, email me or email Margaret, I'm quite sure she's looking forward to those comments. That's why we put it out there. I'm not saying to approve this draft, it is as cleaned up as we could get it, as a suggestion from us. We would definitely want to come back to common practices and run things, what we can do, but I look forward to your comments on the handbook.
For the four eight, isn't that what FMA is allowed?
Four eight is six, twelve weeks.
Your family leave is twelve weeks, but it's twelve weeks unpaid. Family leave, most people don't realize that, but.